Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our City Council Work Session to Order. Councilman Williams will not be in attendance and has been excused. We have one item to address this afternoon. It is the Fiscal Year 2024-2033 Capital Improvements Program and Plan. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, this afternoon's presentation will provide you an overview of the proposed FYI '24 to 2033 Capital Improvements Plan or Program and Plan. The plan continues to complete various ongoing project initiatives that we've been working on over the past few years. The Planning Commission did take action at their January 17th meeting, forwarding the plan to you and recommending the plan be forward to you. At this time, I'm going to ask the Director of Finance to come forward to you enhancing, and she will provide you an overview of the 10-year plan. Teela?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. It is my pleasure to be here today to present to you a little bit more than overview. It's the detailed presentation of the CIP for Fiscal Years '24 through '33. A lot of these slides are going to look really familiar to you. I don't have the remote control for the slide clicker. A lot of these slides are going to look really familiar to you as they are slides that you've seen a couple of times, and then I'll get into the detail of some of the projects. So, this first slide is the first five years of the CIP. This first slide is the first five years of the CIP for all of the various funds. As you're aware, when we look at the CIP, it's a 10-year plan with a focus on the first five years, and this is that first five years for all of the funds. And you can see there in the yellow column on the far right-hand side, the total of all the funds for all the projects for the first five years is $381,936,749. Couple of other numbers I'll point out on this slide is the General Government Fund, which is the last line there in the grid. That is where we keep track of all of our projects related to public safety, public schools, transportation, village and neighborhoods, our public buildings and facilities, and I'm missing one of them, Parks and Rec. And so, that number is $270,696,509 for the first five years. And keep that $270 million number in your mind for the next couple of slides, and I'll remind you of it. The debt capacity there is listed as $30 million a year. We've had lots of discussions as it relates to that debt capacity, and you can see that we are meeting, and we plan to issue that $30 million every year for the first five years. This is the $270 million number that I mentioned as it relates to the government, the general governmental projects broken down by functional category within that fund. And what you can see here is transportation is about 43% of those projects, schools is 24%, public safety 11%, Parks and Rec 9%, public buildings and facilities at 8%, and village and neighborhoods at 5%. The next slide I'm going to show you takes out what we consider the non-local funding, which is the state and federal grant funds that we receive for a lot of these dollars. And so, this is that same $270 million, although it has any of the projects that are, or the portions of the projects that are funded by grant funds taken out of it. And so, the net of that is actually about $193 million. And you can see the percentages change somewhat significantly. So, schools now becomes 34%, transportation 24%, public safety 15%, Parks and Rec 11%, public buildings and facilities at 10%, and village and neighborhoods at 7%. And the reason that we like to show you this slide is because it really illustrates one of the main goals of our CIP when we put it together, and that is to, where required to put in local funding in order to achieve some of these very large projects, primarily transportation projects, where we're required to put in local matching funds in order to be able to achieve these projects using state or other source revenue, we wanted to make sure that those were included in the CIP so that we could leverage those local dollars to get some of these very large projects accomplished. This slide, then, is the revenues and where the revenues come from. This is again that $270 million worth of general government projects, and you can see that of that 54% is anticipated to be funded by bonds, 29% state, federal, and other source revenue, and then the general fund cash at 17%. The note here at the bottom, we do have a policy established by City Council. One of our financial policies is that we will fund 3% of the general fund revenues to go towards cash-funded capital. What that equates to is about, right now, where the general fund is sitting, about six and a half, somewhere between $6.5 to $8 million a year as we move through the CIP and project general fund increases. We have put $46.4 million worth of cash into the general, or into the CIP, so we have added about $11.3 million worth of cash out of the Capital Reserve Fund that was established about a year ago, a little over a year ago, to put some extra cash in. And so, that primarily is reflected in the first two years of the fund, and that primarily is reflected because of the schools and the very large project that we're all aware of with JFK that's coming up here in the first three years of the CIP. With that, we'll get into the various projects in the various funds and departments, and the department heads that have projects in the plan are here today and are available to answer questions at the end of the presentation, the same as I am, just so that if you have detailed questions related to the projects themselves. So, first and foremost, we have Parks and Recreation, and I'll really focus on what we've got budgeted in the first year, and then talk a little bit about years two through five, and then we don't really get into what's in the out years. But if you see a project here that has nothing on it, that's because it's funded in the out years, which is what we consider years six through 10. So, Parks and Rec Capital Maintenance is our maintenance line. This is money that we continually put in every year to maintain our current parks and trail facilities, and that is right around $600,000 a year. You can see that it changes just a little bit depending on the needs. The first year, there is a planned playground, there's some planned playground replacements and resurfacing of the Howard Mass Tennis Complex to be planned for with some of that first-year money. Lone Star Lakes Park, we've got money funded in years three, four, and five, and that is for paving, road paving within the park, access, the north access road construction, a walking path, renovating some boat ramp, the north boat ramp, and some of the design money for the visitor center. The trail enhancements, that is for the existing trails. That is not for building new trails, but it is for, as it says, enhancements to the trails that we already have. The Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail, you can see there in year one, we've got about $4.2 million funded in year one, and some of that is grant money. That is for Phase 1 of Phase 3B, so basically, part 1 of Phase 3B that will extend the trail from where it currently ends at Nansman Parkway to the Cedar Lake Shores neighborhood. The Driver Complex has some funding in years three, four, and five, and that is for the, for some of the design and initial work out there at the Driver Ballfields Complex. Sleepy Hole Park renovation is to do a dog park and basketball courts and an adventure park out there for renovations at Sleepy Hole. And then, you've got water access at the Nansman River. We're all familiar with this project, and this project is to design and construct a boat ramp to get access to the Nansman River. There's some initial funding for a downtown recreation center to do some initial design work on that, and that's in year four. And then, Great Dismal Swamp Park, which will consist of a small park and a playground, there's funding for that in years three and four. Hollylawn Cemetery improvements, which includes replacing some storm drain infrastructure and some new roads in order to open the final section of the cemetery, and that funding we've got a little bit in year one and then some in years three and four. Lake Mead Park improvements to replace the playground and construct a small office for the park staff out there at Lake Mead Park, and we've got funding for that in years four and five. And then, the final one in Parks and Recreation is the JFK Field Lighting with funding timed out in Fiscal Year '26 in order to, as the new school is built, there will be new athletic fields, and they will need to put the lights up because the Parks and Rec Department and the Parks and Rec City Teams use those fields in the evening, and the school doesn't need them in the evening, so we provide the lighting for those. Moving on to public buildings and facilities, we've got first the airport. We've got an airport drainage rehabilitation project, which is some reconstruction of failing substructure, subsurface structures at the airport, and the funding for that is in year one. Point out that these two projects that we have for the airport, only 2% of those projects' amounts listed are local money, the rest are federal and state grant dollars. The Airport Master Plan Update is due, and we've got funding for that in year three. And then, our existing city buildings, we've got the public building and capital maintenance line, similar to how we do the Parks Maintenance Line, and we continually put funding every year. We put funding on an annual basis into the capital maintenance line in order to maintain and do the minor repairs and such at the city-owned, all the city-owned buildings and facilities. Everyone is familiar with the Central Library, so we've got funding in here for the Central Library to continue completing that project. The Godwin Courts Building improvements, that is furniture replacement as well as some file storage systems, carpet and cosmetic upgrades, as well as some elevator upgrades, and we've got funding for that in years one, three, and four. Human Resource Building renovation, this one has been talked about a lot. There's some funding in there to renovate the Human Resource Building, to move the school's administration office over there. I know that that is a much discussed project as it relates to funding for JFK, and what I would tell you about this plan is this plan was very far down the road by the time that we learned about the initial cost estimates that JFK is coming in. And so, at this point in time, we're leaving the plan as it is proposed and as it is approved by, recommended by the Planning Commission, and certainly, as you've all heard me say on numerous occasions, the plan is somewhat of a living document, and as we move forward into upcoming years, things will change and be moved around as needed. Cherry Street Parking Lot Upgrades, we've got some funding in year one to redesign the circulation of that parking lot at Cherry Street in order for safer and more efficient movement. And then, the Municipal Complex Ravine Stabilization, excuse me, we've got funding in year four to stabilize the ravine that's over there by the old HR building across the street. Next up is public safety. The first two lines there on public safety that have funding in them, we've got fire apparatus and ambulance replacements. That is a strategy that we have done for a number of years in a row where we will try and replace one fire truck a year or, and one ambulance a year as funding allows, and so, we have that programmed in to replace one ambulance and one fire truck for the first two years, and then, in years three, in years three, four, and five, to increase that amount a little bit to try and do some more apparatus as we move forward. The ambulance for new stations is programmed out in year five, and that, as you can see by the color coding there, relates to the Station 4 replacement that's down there in kind of that golden, golden color that we've got programmed in years three and five. Nansman Willroy Fire Station, there's some initial design money in year five, and then, we've got a self-contained breathing apparatus replacement project in year five as the ones that we replaced a couple of years ago will age out. And then, Station 9 upgrades at Kings Highway, that's in year four, and as I mentioned before, the Station 4 replacement at Lake Kilby to replace that station is programmed to start in year three with the bulk of the funding in year five. And as it relates to police, we've got the Police Training Center at Whaleyville. This is some money to renovate the old Whaleyville Community Center to become a police training center, and then, the backup 911 center in year five to build a facility to provide a spot for 911 backup. Public schools, often talked about recently. We've got the public schools projects. We have the JFK Middle School replacement with $45.5 million spread out over the first three years, understanding, as I mentioned before, this plan was in the works and kind of, for lack of a better term, has somewhat gone to print before we had the discussions a couple of weeks ago about the $74 million cost on that middle school. And so, I know that the city manager and the superintendent and his finance stuff, as well as us, have been working on some ideas of how we can get to the number that we need to be. But as of right now, because this is a living document and because it continues to move as we go forward, we have enough funding in year one to get this project started, and I would suggest that we leave it as it is just for now so that we can get started and continue those discussions as we move forward and determine what the final cost of that school will be. And then, in years one through four, we've got funding for the Northern Shores Elementary addition. And then, the schools, major repairs and systems replacements, the funding to start again in year five with $3.5 million. Moving into Village and Neighborhoods, these are the three kind of master projects in Village and Neighborhoods. We have the Village and Neighborhoods improvements, which provides for closed drainage and street improvements. We've got money scheduled in all five of the years of the CIP, and primarily, this focuses on Lloyd Place and Rosemont Neighborhoods. And I apologize, I meant to be giving you page numbers in the books as I was moving along, and I kind of, as I've given this presentation a number of times, I kind of got on a roll and forgot to look at my notes and tell you what page numbers are on. So, for Village and Neighborhoods, I will tell you it's on page 71 in the books that you have in front of you, and there is some additional detail about specific streets contained in that section, and I apologize for the oversight on the page numbers. The Open Space Improvements is money that we primarily put aside to take advantage of opportunities when there are opportunities to undertake an open space project. And then, the Downtown Implementation Plan Initiatives, that is funding in order to accomplish the initiatives that were laid out in the Downtown Plan, and specifically in the first year, we've got the Festival Event Center, some wayfinding, and then some initial funding on the Phoenix Bank Block. The big one is transportation, and this one has, is multiple slides, but I will tell you that transportation is on page 45 in your books. And so, to start off with transportation, and these are all projects that we should all, we are all familiar with the names of and the various states of these. And so, the first is kind of an umbrella project of local urban roadway construction, and so, the projects that we have for funding under roadway construction, we've got Holland Road, which everyone is familiar with, Godwin Boulevard, Route 17 road widening, Shoulders Hill Phase 2, and Shoulders Hill Phase 3. And then, moving down to the intersection construction projects, we've got Route 17 and Crittenton Road, diverging diamond interchange on Godwin Boulevard, the Suffolk Bypass at Willroy, Godwin, Prudin, the IMR Study. We've got the East Constance Road, Willroy Road Intersection, and Willroy Road and Progress Intersection Projects in years four and five. Some of the standalone projects that we've broken out from those major categories, we've got the Shoulders Hill Road, Route 17 Intersection Project with some additional funding on that. We've got some channel dredging for maintenance dredging of our rivers and waterways to allow for boat traffic. We've got rail crossings, which are at-grade rail crossing, and some improvements that we can do when we have the opportunity to do those, and then, some miscellaneous roadway improvements, which is funding set aside to do some minor improvements throughout the city as, that can't be covered with the road maintenance money. Relocation of Zone C Headquarters, this is the project to take the Public Works Zone C, which is currently located at the entrance of Lone Star Lakes, and move it to a north, somewhere in the northeastern part of the city. Freeman Mill over Spivey Swamp, this is to replace the existing structure where that bridge is. Route 58 improvements, Long Street Lane to Holland Bypass is to do some improvements at that particular corridor. And then, the next three, the Downtown Railroad Warning System, the Citywide Signal Systems and the Downtown Signal System are all upgrades to the signals and the timing and that of those throughout those areas. A little bit of funding for non-median brake intersection improvements, specifically listed is Route 58, Route 13, 460, and Military Highway. And then, some initial funding out in year four to start talking about electric car charging stations and looking at installing five of them throughout the city. And then, the final, or this is not the final project in transportation, we have one more slide, but on this slide, the final project is the Town Point Sidewalk, which is to design and construct a sidewalk along portions of Town Point Road. This is the final slide for transportation. We've got the North Suffolk Connector, this is some, or that was, that's in the out years, I apologize. Route 460 improvements, which is widening and median construction along Route 460. We've got funding for the Kings Highway Bridge to start some initial design on Kings Highway Bridge. The Pitch Kettle Road realignment and upgrades, some funding to complete that project. Nansman over Beaman's Mill is another bridge structure replacement, and then, we've got some funding for Shoulders Hill Multi-Use Path, which is along Shoulders Hill south of Bennett's Creek Park Road. And then, some additional funding for Nansman Parkway and the Willroy Road Fly Hour, and this funding in year three is planned to deal with some of the inflation issues that we're facing. And I'll just take a moment, and you guys have heard it, as we talked about the school CIP a couple of weeks ago, and you'll hear it from me probably a lot in the upcoming years. If I had a crystal ball, which I don't, kind of wish I did sometimes, I would tell you that every project that we have in the CIP is going to go over budget. I feel confident in saying that. I feel confident in saying that we're dealing with inflation, and we're dealing with cost overruns, and we're going to continue, and that's not singular to us. It's not singular to the City of Suffolk and the projects that we're facing. Any construction project anywhere is going over budget or coming in higher than we had anticipated. So, you will hear me talk a lot about it as we go into the operating budget. You'll hear me talk a lot about it as we continue to move through the CIP. We have to deal with that. So, we have to come up with ways to set aside some funding in order to deal with those as they come up so that we don't get ourselves into trouble. And the last thing hopefully you know about me is that I want to get, I do not want to get the city in trouble in any way, shape, or form. And so, those are going to be continuing conversations. So, I just, I bring that up only to, so that, you know, when you hear me talk about it again and again and again, it won't be a surprise to you. Moving out of our general government projects and into some of our other funds, we've got a project in Fleet to replace our Fleet facilities, and so, the funding here is to design and construct a newly relocated Fleet facility, and we've got that started in year three. Transit, we've got two projects. One is a transit operations facility, and the other is a bus pullout along College Drive. Both of these are funded with state and federal funding, and so, we're looking at the timing here of when those funds come in. But the Fleet facility will be to store the buses and maintain the buses and some office space. And then, the College Drive Bus Pullout is a bus turnout along southbound College Drive at the Kroger within the existing medium. Information Technology, I'm showing you a blank slide, but there is some things that we're going to talk about here with information technology. There are a couple of projects that have come up as it relates to information technology, specifically as this building gets a little bit older, some of the technology needs to be upgraded, the video wall in the 911 Center specifically. That is a project that we've got in IT. We've got the need for redundant tower site to deal with the public safety radios, and we've got a study that we would like to do on existing fiber owned by the city. What we have in information technology is we've got some funding that we, some bond funding that we issued specifically for information technology projects a couple of years ago. Those projects, one of them was the CAD project, which we then got a federal grant to do the bulk of that with, and so, that frees up some previously issued bond funds, and the other one was a project that didn't really get off the ground. So, we are going to, when we bring the ordinances to you to approve the CIP, we're going to have within there some ordinances, or when we, it'll either be with the CIP or it will be with the budget, we'll have some movement there to establish these new projects and move the previously issued funding to those projects. So, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to hear about that. There are some IT projects, but we're going to use some existing funding to pay for them, but we will need council approval to establish these projects. In Stormwater, these, of course, are all projects related to the design, easement acquisition, and/or construction of drainage improvements in the areas that, of course, are shown in the names of the projects. So, you've got some citywide drainage issues to address, stormwater issues citywide, some in the Old Town area specifically, Oakland, Wilkins Drive, Pewsville Drainage Improvements, which also includes funding for BMP, Woodrow and South Suffolk Drainage, Jefferson Street, First Avenue, Sadler Heights, Driver, and some downtown infrastructure improvements. Some of these, as you are, you may be aware, we started issuing revenue bonds in the Stormwater Fund Fiscal Year 2023. The year we're currently in is the first year we've issued some revenue bonds. We are working with the financial advisors to forecast this out so that we make sure that we don't overextend ourselves in stormwater. And so, we are putting at least a million dollars worth of cash, we're planning on putting a million dollars worth of cash towards these projects every year, and then, keep our funding, keep our bond issuances to ride around $5 million a year in the Stormwater Fund. When we, when we first presented the idea to City Council to start issuing revenue bonds in the Stormwater Fund, we, at that time, increased the stormwater rate and told you that that should get us through at least five years before we had to talk about increasing the stormwater rate again, and we're still on track for that. And last, but certainly not least, we have public utilities. As you're aware, you've seen the public utilities projects in the past, and again, I stopped giving you page numbers. So, page 79 is public utilities. I'm really sorry about that. We've got the, kind of, the master projects that certain things fall under. So, first and foremost, we have water source development and water treatment plant expansion. Included in that are, some of the projects are the membrane replacement at the water plant, Crumps Mill Pond improvements, and of course, our water source development charge that we get charged annually. Underwater distribution and transmission system expansion, we've got the southern transmission lines that are programmed into that, and underwater system upgrades, we have neighborhood replacements, service line replacements, and a replacement of the county street elevated tank. And those are projects that are planned in those, in the water side of the Utilities Fund. On the sewer side of Utilities Fund, we have sanitary sewer extensions, and these are just miscellaneous extensions throughout the city. And then, we have sanitary sewer system upgrades, which are system maintenance and pump station upgrades throughout the city as well. And there's more detail in that book, and that book is also available online for the citizens if they want to see what some of these specific areas are. Excuse me. With that, I'll give you my, some of my usual spiel as it relates to the CIP and talk about next steps. So, as you're aware, the CIP is a plan. It's not a budget. It doesn't, year one becomes part of our proposed operating budget here when we come and present that to you, and I think it's in two months, month and a half. And so, this is an ongoing plan. We talked about schools. A lot has been talked about schools, and I tried to address some of that as we go through because we are aware of the issues there. We're certainly not trying to pass a plan that ignores those issues, but when we, when the schools initially gave us their request, and you saw their request two weeks ago at the joint meeting, they asked for an additional $50 million for JFK. We kind of based this plan on that, and so, we're moving forward. We're taking all that into account, and we certainly have no intentions of ignoring that $21 million elephant in the room. The other things I would say about the CIP is this is an ongoing process, and we certainly have tried our best to make sure that we can cover the needs and the priorities as they have been established. And of course, that school takes up a lot of the bandwidth in the CIP for a number of years. And so, we try, we made our best effort at putting things- And so we try, we made our best effort at putting things where they needed to be in order to meet all of our financial policies, in order to make sure that we were staying in those financial policies, and in order to time things when they needed to be timed. With that, what the next steps are, tonight at your regular session, you will have a motion to schedule the public hearing for March 1st. And then, of course, we'll hold the public hearing on March 1st to receive public comment on the CIP. And then at that time, we would ask the city council to take that opportunity, if possible, to adopt the CIP with any recommended edits that you have. And with that, myself, and as I mentioned, the department heads with projects in the CIP are all here to answer any questions that you might have, and I appreciate your time and attention this afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Council, questions or comments? Quiet group this afternoon. Councilman Johnson?
I'll go first. You know, I'm gonna do something. I got a few concerns. Number one, the IT funding that we aren't putting forth yet, but we're going to pull it, how much actual money is that, please?
So...
What do we have leftovers?
We originally issued $3 million for the CAD project, and then we got just a little over, I don't know the number off the top of my head, we got just a little over $3 million from the, from the federal grant in order to do that project. We do need some of that initial grant, bond funding to cover some of the stuff that the federal grant won't cover. There's some consulting fees and stuff like that.
Just an approximate of what we're going to have left.
The projects that were, the projects that we have in there, I think, in total are about one and a half million. Charles is giving me a nod on that. So the three projects that I mentioned, the video wall, the tower redundant site, and then the study on the, where the city's fiber is located, take up about one and a half million, which will, between the project that we are going to cancel and the money from the CAD, still means we'll have about $2 million ballpark that we're kind of holding in reserve to see what happens with that CAD project.
Is that enough for him to do what he needs to do?
Yes.
Okay. Couple of things, and then I'm going to leave the rest to talk to Al about. The Village and Neighborhood on page 75.
Yep.
Just talk about that one more time. I didn't quite catch where that is.
Okay, so 71 is where the initial pages for that start. So Village and Neighborhood improvements specifically, we go into the Village and Neighborhoods systematically, and we replace, we put in curb and gutter and that kind of thing. And there's a grid on page 73 that shows you...
Exactly.
Exactly what streets we're looking at. And so they're in the Lloyd Place and Rosemont Neighborhoods, and the year one funding looks like it's Willow Street, North Division Street, North Lloyd, Lloyd Street, North Capital Street, Bank Street, and Railroad Avenue, as well as South Division, South Lloyd, South Capitol, Freeny Avenue, and Camp Avenue, and South Fourth Street, South Fifth Street, South Sixth Street, South Seventh Street, and Freeny Avenue. You're trying to get me all tongue tied today.
Okay. But the main, the main thing on my mind right this minute is the Downtown Initiative, and all of that money is right in year one, correct?
So the money that you're looking, and the Downtown Initiative, if you look at page 76 in the book, we've got, we have money spread out for the first five years, but in the first year, we got $1.4, $1,450,000, and that's for the Festival Event Center, the Phoenix Bank Block, and some downtown wayfinding. And then the grid on page 76 shows you that we've also got some money planned for some, we've got some money set aside for future projects to come out of that plan, for some gateway improvements, as well as streetscaping on Main Street.
Okay. I have a few other things I'll reserve, and I'll talk to Al, and then he can tell me.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you, Teal, for your presentation. That is a lot of information, and we're going to beat you up a little bit, I'm sure, about some of this, so be, stand by, be patient, not personal. On the Phoenix Bank.
Uh huh.
How are we doing, you said, how much we have in the budget for what year? I didn't see that.
For right now, what's planned in year one for that, it is $350,000, and then there's another $1 million planned for year six, I think. It's in the out years. And it's specifically what we're planning on doing at that, I would have to ask Kevin Wine to come up and answer that question for you, because I don't have the details on exactly what they're, they're planning on doing there.
Okay, because I need to know that, because I'm having a lot of questions being asked of me.
Oh, sorry, Kevin Hughes, wrong Kevin.
Walk around.
Now we got you.
Good afternoon. So what's programmed and requested in here for the $350,000 is to shore up the facility as we continue to figure out what our strategy is on the building and the block. We want to ensure that the building isn't, take any damage for the weather and the elements. And so that's the concept right now, that we would use that funding to ensure we don't lose any of the facility.
Well, that's my concern is that the building continued to deteriorate, and we keep putting Band-Aids on it, it's not going, we keep spending money and not getting to the finished product. So I think we need to really look at that. The fairground, the building's there, or if you look, just like Mr. Riddick put in the paper, it's really going down. We need to look at that whole block there, and we own the Phoenix Bank, but the other one was privately owned. So the first thing they look at, will look at the city building and what you're doing. So that's the problem that I have, with putting out here what we need to do, and we have a building that the city owns that looked just as bad as any other building down on the fairground. So I think we need to continue to keep that up front and continue funding it so we can get something done there to make sure that building is preserved, and hopefully we can finally put some museum in there like it was planned some years back. So that's, that's number one. The other thing that I want to just comment on, a couple of things on the budget is the Brady's Marina. Now, that's something that we, I thought we was funding, started last year to go ahead and continue funding each year till it was completed.
There is a project in there for the water access at the Nansman River. That is the project that that falls under, and I believe the purchase of the Brady's Marina, I'm looking to Al, has been completed. And then, I'm going to, Al, if you wanted, Mr. Moore, excuse me, if you would like to jump in.
We have completed the purchase of the marina itself. We're nearing completion of the documents that provides us the additional access that we need to have appropriate roadway in with the church that we've been working with, West Ministers, and we're nearing completion on that. We do have some existing funding that we'll be working to do, some preliminary studies, design layout type stuff as we move forward to the future money here in the CIP.
Okay, because I was looking at, I don't remember what page it was, but it was, wasn't any funding out, I think it was on the Parks and Rec, wasn't any funding out for two or three years.
So the funding for the water access, it's on page 21, the funding for the water access at the Nansman River, we've got funding in year two, and then the bulk of the funding in year three. Again, as we, as we put this, as we put some very large projects in here specifically related to John F. Kennedy, things had to move a little bit. And so you've, you've heard me say, if something needs to move up, something else has to, needs to move out, because there just isn't the capacity in each of these years to move things around very mu, move things forward without moving things back. So if there is, if there is the will to move a project more accelerated, something else has to slow down a little bit.
Okay. Just letting you know my concerns, okay?
I understand.
The other thing is Holly Lawn Cemetery, the 290,000, 282, I thought that was supposed to be perpetual care money and not taxpayers' money.
The, I thought, yes. Half of it is perpetual care money. So, so half of it is programmed to come from the cemetery fund, and the rest of it is coming out of the general fund, yeah.
All right. The reason I'm asking that, if you, I don't know if you might not have been here, a few years back, we was talking about cemeteries and perpetual care, Carver Cemetery, and all, they were saying, well, we're getting out the cemetery business, and all the money that, and everything turned it over to city employees, was not doing that anymore, and you had to contract to do it and all. I thought that was meant that we were not using taxpayers' money.
So the, I will tell you that the perpetual care fund does not have enough money in it to undertake a lot of these big projects. But we do use it for some maintenance out there. We use it as we can sparingly because it does not, there isn't enough in the perpetual care fund to truly perpetually care for the cemeteries.
I understand what you're saying. I hope you understand what I'm saying, too. It's some, a few years back, when we was talking about that, they didn't want to put any money into Carver Cemetery because they said, we're getting out the cemetery business. Perpetual Care was going to take care of the older cemeteries because there was money there to take care of them. So I'll be bringing that back, but I just wanted to let you know that that's something that I have a concern with. We're using the taxpayers' money, and perpetual care is supposed to be taken care of, okay? Let's see, was that one other? Okay. That's it for right now.
Okay.
Thank you. I probably have some more, want to keep going through the book.
No problem.
Councilman Richter?
Thank you very much, Mr. Marion. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Even though this is the third time that I've heard your presentation on the capital improvements program, I want you to know I paid very strict attention, just like I did on all the other times. I do have a couple of questions, though, and I'm going to start out with probably the biggest one for me, and that's on page 51, where you're talking about miscellaneous roadway improvements. And it says that some of the projects may include the replacement of wooden curbs with concrete. I know that in the neighborhood that I first moved into in Suffolk, out there on the east end of Lakeside, there's still a whole bunch of wooden curbs, and I know over in Riverview, the neighborhood where my daughter lives, and most of Dumville Avenue still has all wooden curbs in it. And over the years, with the repaving of the streets and whatnot, there's a lot of places where there's just literally no curb left at all because the street level has come up to the level of where the old wooden curbs are. And also, you know, there's obviously on-street parking in those neighborhoods, so, you know, without concrete curbing of people's tires and whatnot rub up against it, that continues to degrade the wooden curb. So my question is that, you know, you've got $200,000 laid out for every, you know, for the next four or five years. Is there a priority for getting those kind of projects done?
I'll have to ask Public Works Robert Lewis to come up here and, and address that, because I can't speak to the prioritization of how that is spent.
Yes, sir, as you note, that is a catch-all category, so we do many, many different things in this. So the majority of the money we utilize for road maintenance comes from the Department of Transportation. It's a pass-through from the state. But their rules are very, very strict as to what we can do. So we can do maintenance, but we can't do improvements. Going from a wooden curb to a concrete curb, Vidal has very clearly told us that is an improvement, and therefore we cannot use maintenance money. To be honest, $20,000 is a drop in the bucket to begin that process, 200 total. But again, if you take 10% of it to that specific thing, it would not go far. In fact, 200,000, if we spent every dime on it, would not go very far. It's just the issue of priorities. There's always other things that are much more pressing. We usually try to reserve that money to address a safety issue that comes up more so than kind of a maintenance or aesthetic issue, but certainly we're open to guidance from council, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay, because, you know, the, in a lot of those neighborhoods, the city owns the property between the street and somewhere up, I mean, I know in my house on Linden Avenue was about three or four feet on the other side of the, even where the sidewalk was. And I'm concerned about that area, that grassy area between the sidewalk and the street, you know, in a lot of these neighborhoods. And once again, Lakeside and Riverview are my reference points, because that's where I live and where my family is. You know, that area is, you know, being eroded completely. And so at some point, it is going to have to be taken care of. You know, and also from an aesthetic standpoint, you know, you go into some of our nicer, older neighborhoods, and you've got 100-year-old wooden curbing in there. If it was up and high and, you know, above street level and whatnot, it might be somewhat attractive and aesthetically appealing, but the way it looks now, it's neither. But thank you for that update. And I know that we don't have money to do everything, but, you know, at some point, that is going to have to be looked at.
Yes, sir.
Then, listen, Teal, on page 57, the Route 460 improvements...
Don't go too far, Robert.
Sorry about that. How is the Port 460 project, or is this in conjunction with the Port 460 project, or is this going to be doing something that that project may override and improve on later down the road? And is this, I just want to make sure that this is money well spent.
Yes, sir. I believe Mr. Moore is going to address that.
Mr. Manager, could you address that?
Yeah, Councilman, that $1 million that we have identified here in the CIP is matching funds with funding from the port and also funding from the developer to do the design of the Route 460 improvements.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I guess last, on page 72, on the bottom, the open space improvements, I see where one of the things that that money is used for is to acquire, you know, for opportunities for, to acquire something, to create some open space. If that money doesn't get used for that, if an opportunity doesn't come up, where does that money go?
We just, we hold on to, we've used it for a number of different things in the past. We've used it for the Constance, the property across the river from the Hilton Garden Inn, where we're going to develop a park downtown. I believe some of it's going to the Festival Event Center. So we, we hold on to it until something comes up. And so, but we, we tend to spend it on these things that come up, and I know there's a good chunk of it that's going to get spent. Some of the stuff that we've appropriated in the past is going to get spent on the Festival Event Center.
Okay, and then finally, under the transportation, just sort of globally, are we concerned about revenue from the state being able to be maintained? And I know there was a big article in this Metro Magazine that we get talking about the decline in gas revenues because, you know, number one, vehicles are becoming more efficient, and number two, more and more people are switching to electric vehicles, and, you know, there are people that are trying to force us into electric vehicles, so clearly the gas tax revenue is going to shrink. I know they put, or they were talking about putting a provision in this year to at least have it keep up with inflation, the gas tax rate. But if the volume, you know, continues to go down, obviously the income from the, from that tax revenue is going to continue to go down, which I would assume is going to have some downstream impact on what we can expect from the state in terms of road, road dollars.
So anything that is programmed in here in the transportation section specifically as non-local source revenue is something that we are fairly certain we are going to get from that non-local source revenue, whether it's a smart scale application that has been approved, and then they've just bumped the funding out for a number of years, or whether it's a revenue sharing project that's been approved. But these are all things that we are fairly confident that the revenue is going to come in for. I will tell you, by way of an example, there are several grants from a state and federal perspective that we are exploring to do more sections of the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail, as those have not been approved, and we, they're still up in the air, they're not in here in this program, in this plan until, we're very conservative about how we build this and put this together. So we do not put anything in here from a non-local source revenue unless we're fairly certain that we are going to get that revenue.
You know, and these days, we're dealing with a huge amount of uncertainty with inflation and supply chain and everything else. So, you know, kudos to you and your staff for trying to keep some, you know, some semblance of packaging around this little problem that we've got.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions, comments? Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, good presentation. Couple of things got my attention. Want to ask a question. About, how about the College Drive Fire Department, this side? I didn't see that in here.
That's already been funded. So the fire station up in the College Drive area was funded through last year's CIP. CIP. And so as of right now, you're not going to see it in here because we don't have need, we have not discovered a need for additional funding at this point. So it's, it's already funded, it's in, it's, and it's in some stage of the works, I guess, is, is for lack of a better term. Gary Jones can address where it's at from a status perspective.
And another thing, since you said that already been funded, how about, well, what happened up in Northern Shore? I thought that was funded, already been funded, I had to move on it, no?
Northern Shore's has been in the plan for a number of years, but it has not reached to where it gets to year one and becomes part, part of the budget and is funded.
Okay, another question. Um, just to ask, and I'm going to talk to Al about some of his other thing. I see you got 22 million for the school. Am I right?
Uh, in year one, yes.
Year one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then you got 45 million, that's what we come up with?
So when the, let me, let me turn to that page. That is on page 65. So we have already appropriated $7.5 million to the school project in previous year's CIPs. We have $22 million programmed in year one, 20 million, 500,000 in year two, and 3 million in year three. So the total of that right now is at $53 million.
Uh-huh.
Which is, yes.
What I'm saying to you, by we not really knowing what are we going to do, and you already put that money up front, I mean, we don't even know we going to give them the extra $21 million.
Well, I think at this point in time, we know the school's going to get built. And so we're putting funding in there to start that process.
Okay.
I believe that, that Mr. Moore has talked to the superintendent about the money that we've put over on the, on the old HR building to move that to JFK, to add some additional funding to the JFK project. And I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore would like to address that.
Yes, Vice Mayor. Of course, the superintendent and I have met as recently as the other day, along with the Assistant Director of Finance, along with Superintendent's financial staff. Of course, as we had at our last meeting, the joint meeting, we're talking about the $21 million. We currently have on the Health and Human Services Building, we had previously funded, I believe, seven, 7 million, was that correct, Charles? We have about 6.2 million left of that funding.
We have funded 7 million of that.
7 million. We have 6.2 of that available to move towards JFK. We also have 3.5 million, you'll see in the out years of that building, I think three years out, that we can move towards JFK. So that brings up 9.7 million of the 21 million we were talking about. The superintendent and I are in agreement on that. And as you're aware during the meeting, he nodded in agreement to that when we were sitting here. As we talk about the other shortfall, we have many things that are still in play that we will think we'll have, as we're working, we're working through that other issue, both from a school perspective and as we look into the future of us, or our CIP. So I believe as we work through this coming year, and that's what Tealyn was referring to, is not to make rapid changes now, but to let us move through this future year, we'll be going into design. We have some time for the construction and to understand where we'll be on that. Of course, we'll have year ends coming up. We can see where we are there in the world. We have a potential for a grant. They have another potential for some other funding that we're, we talked about last week. So I think the superintendent and I had a very good meeting last week, and we have some avenues that we're looking at to bring JFK home, as long as the world doesn't change on us again. But I think the way the CIP is laid out right now, even though we're showing the other 3.5 in the CIP, still with the Health and Human Services Building, as we move through next year's CIP, we'll be moving that, no doubt, to JFK. We'll see by then where potential grant funding is as current year lands, whether we're fortunate or not fortunate. But we have spoken in, I thought last, I think it was Thursday, wasn't it, Charles? I thought we had some very good conversations and we have a glimpse of how we're going to get home at this time.
Okay, one more question, another question. Um, you said something about Town Point Road sidewalks.
Yes.
When is that going to happen?
Um, that is on, let's see, that is under the transportation section, which is on page 45. And the funding for that, I'm, the funding for that starts in year one and there's some funding in year two. And so the initial design will start in this upcoming fiscal year, or I'm sorry, it's in years two and three. So it will start in fiscal year '25 with construction in fiscal year '26.
Want to ask one more question. With the situation with the schools, did we have to push back a lot of other projects that we, I mean, did we had to push back some more projects behind that?
In putting this together initially, yes. In putting this, in putting the school in the first three years, there were a lot of projects, a few projects that had to kind of shift time-wise in order to get everything into the CIP within our financial policies and within our debt capacities. So there are things that might take a little bit longer than, than we had originally thought in planning last year, this time last year, in putting the schools in there and, and that taking up a lot of the, of the capacity.
Good, good job. I'll talk to you later. Thank you.
Mr. Jones will address the fire station.
Vice Mayor, yes. Your question about Fire Station 11 or College Drive Fire Station. First, the funding, that project has been fully funded to the tune, I think it's 9.9 million, is that, I think that's about right. And we have completed the design. It's in the process of final planning review right now. So we're looking to go out to bid for construction here within the next few months. And once construction starts, we anticipate sometime in the fall of '24 completing, completing construction of that station.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, one more time. The three things I was going to talk to Al about, but I'm going to throw them out at you if you don't mind, Tealyn. The driver complex.
Yes.
A lot of my citizens are concerned that we are just dragging our feet so poorly on this, and there's so much revenue and, and need in this area. We're, we're kind of missing the boat there. I would like to see if there's any funds available. It's only $200,000 to start the process, to start this process and let's start getting that place ready to put ball fields on. I'd like to see it move forward, throwing it out. Sometimes there's money hanging around. The other thing is also in Parks and Rec, the Great Decimal Swamp Park, I know this is brand new, but we need to move with that as fast as possible. It's a little park that is going to make a huge impact on Waleable. I'm saying it for my, my Waleable friend that's not here tonight because I know he would want it. And it's one of those things that we need to push that forward. Again, it's one of, it's this money left around, which it seems like there might be, could be. That $100,000 would go a long way to get that park started with. Third one is from me, and I've, I've said this before, Chief Barackin. Station four, I, I can't, ever since I've been on council, we've been promised that that station was going to be improved. I know we're now we're going to improve and make it bigger and better. But we've got people up here that we are passing all kinds of things happening in our city. And with what's getting ready to happen, happen over on the 460 corridor, we've got the fire station out at King's Fork, it's great. It can't handle it all. We need that station either brought forward, or the station in Holland needs to be brought forward, or then a new station needs to be brought forward on, on 58. And in all honesty, we can't wait for so long. It, it is kind of past time. So I'm just throwing it out there. It's not in here because we've got so many needs, but it is truly a need that we need in this city. And I don't, I'm just throwing it out because I want it to be talked about.
Station four is in there.
It is, a million dollars.
Starting on, on year three and with, for design and then...
You want to go back and look for the last eight years? I'm not being a smart ass, but I am. It's been there for how many years? And we haven't done anything about it except move it back. I'm just saying, it is a priority and I want us to look at it as a priority for the immediate future. Just saying. Well, keep the million there, but it needs to move forward. Thank you. Now, I won't say anything else. But thank you for what you do. We do appreciate you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Mr. Manager?
Yeah, if I could maybe put a little bit of, of bow on Tealyn's presentation, not that it needs it, but again, she said early on, and when we talk about capacity, and, and council's right, on a lot of the requests we have, we have a lot of needs and, and funding that required to meet those needs. But again, as we talk about our capacity, is how this has been assembled, as we, if we shift something, something's got to be shifted back. And so what we've tried to do here is, and finish some initiatives, and I talk about the library, which has been in planning for 20-some years. We, we've been off and running, trying to get JFK moving, and then we're still working on that, and I think we'll get home there in the next year. We have, you know, access to the Annan Smith River, we have downtown park, we have fire stations, we have many things that we have to layer in here, which I think staff has done an outstanding job in doing so. And I just want to go back to it. If we shift something or want to move something forward, remembered each reaction, each action has a reaction in this, and, and we just got to be, recognize that. But I do appreciate what staff has done today. Be happy to answer your questions on the side as we can move ahead.
Okay, I'll just wrap it up with a couple of comments. I'll try to be brief. To the manager's point, I think the first thing we realize, and it's not hard to come to the conclusion, that we have a lot of needs, a lot, a lot, a lot of needs. I've been to a few community meetings and I start writing down the things that folks would like to have. And I've also said it before, unlike the federal government, we can't print money. We have to have what's called a balanced budget, which means the revenue has to come from somewhere. So I think that needs to be a concern when we look at what type of growth we want, where we want the growth. We want to constantly balance those scales with protecting the quality of life and uniqueness and heritage of our city, along with creating opportunities to generate revenue that will not be on the backs of the taxpayers, that will allow us to accomplish some of these needs that everybody's looking for. So let's keep that in mind. When you're looking at the CIP, and, and Ms. Hanson alluded to it, make sure that you look at the sources of funding. It's very, very important. When you look at something and say, oh my goodness, we're spending a million dollars on a trail, wouldn't that million dollars be better spent on something else? Well, you can't do that if the million dollars is revenue generated from a grant-specific request. So look at the funding sources, especially as it applies to Parks and Rec and transportation. The majority of the transportation dollars are state and federal dollars. So what has to be most concerning are those funds, those local funds that we're using out of the general fund to pay for improvements and other things that you would like to have. I was looking at, you know, we got a lot going on, just like the manager said, we got the downtown implementation plan, we got the library that we're finishing up. The school system takes a big chunk out of it. I agree with Councilman Johnson. I'm, I'm a huge proponent of the driver complex. I see not only the driver complex as being a great amenity for our citizens, because as a city, we really do not have, we do not offer that to our citizens. Suffolk Youth Athletic does a good job picking up some of the need there. But I believe that the driver complex would also generate a considerable amount of income, you know, through hosting tournaments and bringing people to our city. So once again, where does the money come from? We're talking about, in the CIP, it says six to eight million dollars. Well, we just kind of got surprised with an additional $21 million from the schools. And they call this thing a plan, but it's hard to plan for anything when the plan changes a lot, and especially with some fairly big numbers. I am not pleased that we are not going to be able to offer an alternative to the professional building as far as the school administrative offices are concerned. That is a building that we rent. And it looks like obviously we're going to, I hope this doesn't hurt our negotiating standpoint, but, I mean, it doesn't look like we're going to have much of an option, an easy option, let's put it that way. I guess there's always an option. We've been talking about the Human Resources Building and relocated. That started off, if I'm correctly, to be a $6 million project, went to a seven, do a nine, do a 12, and all over the place, and now we're kind of back again, so we end up with nothing. That's why I'm talking about a plan. I look back at the CIP in 2019, JFK was $44 million. And I know we got, I mean, and I know all about inflation and cost overruns and supply chain until I'm, you know, about to puke, to be honest with you. I mean, we've all deal with it. I deal with it every day. But I'm looking at the difference in the numbers. So we've gone from 44 million to 70-some million, faster than the speed of light. I know we can start certain things and worry about it later as far as JFK is concerned, but from my standpoint, I'm not going to really be comfortable unless we have a lot better understanding other than we're going to start it and jump off the bridge later. You know, we, we've got to have some clear direction and we have to have a commitment, something that we can plan on so we can work around it. And I know you're going to be moving some resources and, you know, moving some allocations that were going to go someplace else. And I don't need an answer, I'm just chunking it out there. But I'm not comfortable doing what we've been doing, which, okay, we'll start it and the story changes a year from now or two years from now. A plan is only good to the extent that you can implement it. And I just don't see it. I'm looking at the, and I'm talking about the school CIP, I'm looking at the school CIP, and this is way down the road, I'll be long dead and really not have to worry about it. But we did spend a lot of money on a facility study and things like seeing Elephant Fork and Kilby Shore is still being separate projects to the tune over $100 million for two elementary schools, when one of the options in the facility study and probably recommended option would be to consolidate those two schools and save about $30 million of that $100 million, plus the operational savings. So, you know, we've just, like I said, we have limited resources for a myriad of things that we'd like to have. Nansman River High School, and I know this, this is school stuff and I probably shouldn't be bringing it up, but I am bringing it up because it's a lot of money. Nansman River High School, I mean, we can fix the overcrowded problem in the high schools by putting that addition on. And I'm looking down there, it's in fiscal year '29 to '33, and we're, and we're allocating money someplace else. Completely off the topic, you know, we did some improvements years back to the intersection of King's Highway and Route 10. I believe we took the overhead utilities and they were relocated underground, and that intersection is really cockamamie intersection where there's, you know, people merging and stopping and anyhow. And then we kind of, that project kind of got lost. And we were talking about looking at a conventional T maybe, well, with the turn lane heading in, a conventional T intersection with a turn lane heading back into town. I think with the improvement in Crittendon Road, once we do that alignment and straighten out that road, I think it is going to attract more traffic down Crittendon Road. And when you hit the end of Crittendon Road, you ain't going across the bridge. So you're going to have to take a right and go through that intersection, that along with the increased traffic. So I know it's not anything for this year, but I want, you know, would like to see that it's, it is addressed in the upcoming years, or at least take a look at it. And with that, I think we have, with the money that we have, I think you've done a very good job with the resources that you have developing the CIP and doing the best we can with the resources that we have, which is what we need to do. And with that being said, thank you very much for your presentation. All right, that concludes the open part of our work session. I understand we do have a need for a closed meeting. And Madam Kirk, would you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code...
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-37, 11, A8, and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations, for the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and the Wetlands Board.
Counsel, motion has been presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Bennett?
Second motion.
Second from Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clark, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of 7 to 0.
That concludes our work session. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM.